Okay, everybody, the zoning board of adjustment will come to order this third day of April, uh, two thousand twenty-five. The time is six thirty. Roll call.
Anne Torrey.
Present.
Ray Mas.
Here.
Elaine Hogan.
Here.
Ben Euro.
Here.
Sharon Lee.
Here.
Vincent Light.
Here.
Paul Yatna.
Here.
Anna Cruz.
Here.
Amanda Calafano. Eugene Horowitz.
Here.
And Chris Haven absent.
Okay, adequate notice of this meeting has been posted Borough Hall filed with the Borough Clerk and mailed to the Aspera Park Press and Two River Times. This meeting is being taped recorded and in the event, the applicant uses the services of a court importer to transcribe the tapes. The board requires a copy of the transcript. We will bring about eight P M. deliberation testimony heard thus far in the conference room on the first floor. Public is invited to attend, however, discussion between board members and the public is not permitted at that time. No new face will be heard after nine P M. The Red Bank Zoning Board of Adjustment has maintained a policy cutoff hour of nine thirty P M. for its hearings. Any applicant not heard this evening will be carried over to next scheduled meeting. Um, pliable legion.
Plausible legion stood by, but the state's commander to the Republic of San Francisco, the God of the soul, the religion and justice for our own.
Okay, so we're gonna take a vote on the short.
Um, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Uh, we had a discussion, uh, over the last several months regarding the, uh, One Glow Port project. And, um, basically, uh, my understanding of the situation is that the applicant, uh, previously obtained approval. And, uh, there were, uh, two issues which have subsequently arisen. Uh, basically, as a result of a change of grade, the building was approved, I'm sorry, was built. Uh, approximately five inches taller than what was approved. And there was a slight, uh, change to the elevator tower, uh, but, uh, initially, well, as initially thought. Um, that elevator tower issue was going to create a new variance, but that has been revised, so it's just a slight deviation, uh, Mr. McKenna, but no new variance.
That's correct.
Okay, and then with regard to the height, um, we, uh, it sounds like through the discussion that, uh, the board finds that it was a good faith error. There was no bad faith. Uh, the board certainly appreciates the fact that the applicants, uh, stopped building while the process was, um, unfolding. And the, um, the request is, um, that we administratively approve the change, uh, with the understanding that, uh, A. Um, no further changes absent for the board approval, B, um, all the other, uh, remaining terms and conditions of the resolution of approval remain the same. And, and C, the applicant is, um, coming to release and, uh, defend and hold harmless the borough. Uh, the zoning board and the engineers and the borough engineer, board engineer and respective agents, representatives, employees to be liberally construed. Just in the unlikely event there's a problem in the future, uh, the borough does not want to invite, uh, a lawsuit. And, uh, the other thing underlying this, because it's, you know, not usual, uh, uh, but the underlying importance of this is that. This is not dramatically going to change the appearance. It's not dramatically going to, uh, be known from anyone who's walking down the street. And, uh, so, um, based upon those things, I believe from some of the board comments that, um, we would be. Uh, inclined to the board to administratively approve this. Mr. McKenna, um, thank you for being here tonight. You've sort of hurt my, um, half baked. Uh, summation off the top of my head. Um, you're agreeing with those things on behalf of your client? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, we could have a, a motion to administratively authorize the, um, improvements and the modifications that we just talked about. And with a further understanding that, uh, we would notify the borough attorney of this, uh, no, the borough engineer of this change.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve this administratively?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Um, boy, can I do all my favor or?
Each one do one by one, but I think only.
Okay. Anne Torrey.
Uh, I don't think I can vote because it's the discussion. Sorry.
Ray Mas.
Yes.
Ailey Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Yes.
Paul Yatna.
I'm in, uh, two states.
Anna Cruz.
Yes.
And, uh, Amanda Calafano.
Yes.
And Eugene Horowitz.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good to see you. Thank you. Take care.
Keep working. All right, we have, we have an administrative matter. We have a resolution of approval for, uh, thirty Saint Nicholas Place.
Mr. Chairman, I got this out late and I apologize. This was a rather straightforward application, application to construct an addition at the site. And the only, uh, conditions of note, remember this technical variance, Shauna, was the expansion of a non-conforming structure. Um, triggered by the fact that the existing lot is two hundred fifty feet undersized.
Yes.
And basically, the only, uh, conditions of note were compliance with all the affordable housing rules and regulations and compliance with Shauna's memo. And that the materials for the proposed addition appropriately match and complement, um, the existing structure. And you recall, this was the testimony was the applicant needs more living space, uh, because of anticipated growing family. So if the board feels comfortable, we can adopt that. And again, I apologize for the delay.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Anne Torrey.
Yes.
Raymond Mas.
Yes.
Ailey Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Euro.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vincent Light.
Yes.
Paul Yatna.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have three O two River Road.
Come on.
Come on up.
Okay, this is, uh, the Pudido application and, uh, let me just state, um, is there anyone here? Who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? All right, we don't see any, uh, you can have a seat, but Shauna has any particular side of the date?
Side if you want. You can put that right in the middle.
And, uh, so Shauna and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And, um, Shauna, I'm assuming Jackie has zoomed out?
Yes.
Okay, so Shauna, what we'll do is we'll swear you in. You're a professional planner and you are the borough's director of community development. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, domestic knowledge, self you got?
Yes.
All right, and then what we're gonna do is we're gonna mark the, uh, development permit application and denial letter dated December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. That'll be A one. A two is the intent to proceed dated January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. A three are the plans prepared, uh, by Mark Fitzsimmons dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, two pages. And A four is the review memorandum from Shauna E. Banks. Um, and let's see if that's it. I don't have anything else. So we can, uh, what we can do is swear you in when you get situated and you can go back to the microphones and we'll swear anyway.
River.
You can just grab them and sit right by the mic.
Oh, wow.
We need to pick you up on for the record.
All right, so just, uh, to get this thing going, um, if you could state both of your names, please.
My name is Paul Pudero.
All right.
Bring it right close.
Just bring it really close.
Even closer.
Yeah.
Yeah. My name is Paul Pudero.
And you are?
Sure. Pudero, my wife.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Red Bank Zoning Board. If you could just both raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide? Okay, so let the record reflect that both witnesses have been sworn. And I'm just gonna ask you a couple real quick questions to get the ball rolling and then to your shows that you, uh, talk about the board, about what you want. But just, are you all the owners of the property?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it roughly?
Uh, probably over fifty years.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Bravo, thank you. And my understanding is that there's a mixed residential slash professional use there right now?
Exactly.
Okay, and, uh, do you live at that site?
Yes.
Okay, and let's see, just to get some real basic information with regard to the existing home, um. Uh, it's two-story, correct?
Two-story.
And how many bedrooms?
Four.
And how many bathrooms?
Three.
All right, and is there dedicated parking for?
The residential portion of it?
Or not really?
I'm sorry.
Is there dedicated parking for your home?
Yes.
Okay, and how many dedicated parking spaces for your own?
Well, I have an office there, so I have about a ten car parking lot.
Okay. I mean, is it, is it restricted for the, for the house?
Well, it's combination.
Okay, combo. All right, and then just, all right, and just in terms of the existing office, roughly, is it one story, two stories?
It's a one-story wall.
Okay, and, uh, what, um, what's the size of it roughly now?
Um, you know, I think it's about seven hundred and five square feet.
Okay, and then my understanding is that you want to convert that existing office, and what type of office was it?
Dental.
Dental, and is it still active or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm still there.
Okay, and, uh, so you want to convert that to an apartment? Okay?
That's all.
And, um, and just out of curiosity, um, uh, it's a one-bedroom apartment that you're converting into?
Approximately, and that's what we're looking to do.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over, my understanding and Shauna and the applicants can correct this. My understanding is that your proposal was A, convert the office to a one-bedroom apartment. And B, uh, a three hundred sixty-two square foot, one-story rear addition, um, for the living room. And, uh, also a hundred sixty-five square foot, uh, extension of, um, I'm sorry, a new hundred sixty-five square foot exterior porch. And the fourth element was a three hundred twelve square foot rear patio. Um, is that pretty accurate?
Right.
Okay, and why don't you tell the board, thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's just to get the, the basics that we need. So why don't you tell the board what you want to do and why and, uh?
I've been there for, you know, excessive fifty years, have lived there and worked there for that many years. Um, at some point, like everybody, you have to think about retirement. And our thought was at one point to just sell the house as it is, it was another use of the home office. Since it's already been that way for that many years and beyond before me, I didn't, I didn't, uh, start that. I came into that, our house, when we bought it, and it was a physician's home office. And I purchased it with the understanding that we can make it into a dental practice there and all. And I actually was before this board for that very purpose, um, at the time. I didn't have a clue. I didn't know what that required, um, and I was given the approval to continue that use. And that's how it's been since we, uh, since we've lived there. And so now we're at this, uh, agenda, to just this point in our lives where I want to consider retiring. And, um, in that thought, with that thought in mind, we proposed, or we thought about possibly changing the use. Of the garage, or I should say of my office into a, an apartment. And I, you know, enlisted the, uh, support of a, uh, local architect. First of all, I wanted to see what it would look like in that scope and how it would look. And before I even made any decision about even coming before board with it. And when we got the plans and we did went through all of that part, we then decided to apply for this. See if it would work. And I, at the time, didn't, again, thinking that it was a use not permitted, meaning my office was a use not permitted in the zone. And intense, obviously, a couple people coming and going, um, and have over the last fifty-seven years, uh, as well as live there. I thought, if nothing else, we're changing it back to a more conforming use residential and, uh, never thinking that. You know, this is an apartment or it's a two-family. We had considered, well, it's a mother-daughter, we're, we're not getting any younger. And, um, you know, at some point, we just felt that this would be the possibility. And my son got into the discussion with us about it and we, um, you know, came to some kind of a decision that I would go forward with it and see what would happen. That if he'd be, he'd be interested in purchasing the home and moving in himself into the home and we'd live in the apartment. And we've gone back and forth with all these things, but basically, we can't do anything until we know that this could happen. And that's how we go over it at this point.
That's correct, um, Lord. Right now, the, the borough does not have, um, and what I think when, um, the Pudidos first approached me. Um, regarding converting this office space, they were considering an accessory dwelling unit, which we do not have, um. An ordinance for at this time, um, this would kind of fall into that line because technically it's not really like a two-family if you really think about it. Um, it doesn't have the same amount of bedrooms as the main house. The main house is much larger, um, has a lot more space. Um, if you think about that, um, so I would have put this under an accessory dwelling and an attached accessory dwelling unit instead of just a one-bedroom apartment. But since we don't have an ordinance for that, um, I had to put it under the category of a one-bedroom apartment.
And, you know, I, I, it seemed logical that it could be done. I, you know, maybe I'm wrong that thought. But not knowing the ordinance and I, in discussing this with, uh, the architect who's not here, obviously. Um, he, you know, kind of mentioned to me that in other towns, I don't want to say other towns, maybe not here, but. Other towns have come up with this thought in mind of allowing, you know, elderly people staying in the property that they either owned. And allowing, uh, a sibling to purchase the property and then ultimately live there. And, uh, so he, you know, he kind of gave me somewhat of an incentive, not that I wasn't, didn't know the total, um, you know. Requirement as it, as it stands, but I just felt, let's give it a, a shot, see what happens. So, I mean, I sat on this board for over ten years and I was chairman of that, of this board for maybe five. And I had heard a lot of crazy applications. Even Abe McCoyle, we didn't, based on a lot of things, ordinances, things. So, you know, I just know that you have the power to make a decision one way or the other, and you don't want to set a precedent. I understand that. Um, but each application generally is judged by its own merits, I think. And what you're looking to do, or what we were looking to do is not make it into a commercial property that we were gonna rent out the space to anybody. We felt that we were gonna use it for our own benefit or unused, and like the house, we don't want to see it. You know, I can obviously continue, uh, if I don't get it, if this doesn't happen, I guess I could just say, well, we can stay there. Or we could sell it and hope that maybe some other professional would be interested in purchasing it and using it for their business at home. But, you know, I'm not looking to do that at this point.
So, so your intention is not to rent it out to any, anybody up the street?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I mean, I know that happens. I know that people do it. I know that people have, you know, Airbnb stuff and all that. That isn't my intention. That wouldn't have been my intention anyway.
Okay.
I don't frankly want to have anybody living there except myself and my wife and, um, you know, if my son. Ultimately, because he already is no longer living in his home, it's like he's renting right now. Not that he expects that he's gonna move in. He might just like the rental life.
Right.
As opposed to the home, so I don't know, but at this point, this is what we would like to consider.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, isn't, uh, this is sort of a question for everybody. Isn't Red Bank moving towards an A D U ordinance?
Yeah.
Isn't there state law that sort of pushes us in that direction anyway? We're just not there yet?
That's correct. Um, it's been rumored for, since last year that, um, the state. Will be making like a mandatory A D U ordinance to help with affordability throughout the state, um, so. And that's something that, um, in speaking with the governing body, that's, that's the big next phase that we want to move towards to, um, to accommodate. Those that want to downsize and live in a more affordable unit.
So I have a question about the logistics around this. Will the apartment have separate utilities?
Separate, yeah.
So, okay, and, um, in terms of like, if we start approving A D Us, um, what happens with like post office addresses? Do they get like an A and a B or?
That I don't, that again is on this post office.
Did the dentist, um, office have a separate address?
No, it's the same.
So one, one mailbox?
One mailbox, that's it. Well, you know, I pay everything as my own, I pay for, I believe I pay for, it's a hundred dollars.
Right, but the apartment will have separate, uh, utilities.
Yeah, but I mean, basically for ours, you know, not for somebody else.
It's, it's been done. Um, again, like I said, that they would have to probably take up with the tax assessor, um, because they are the ones that assign numbers and all that, um.
They have that today.
It's, it's not weird separately now, is it?
No, 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 no.
It's not separately.
It's just one.
I'm saying you might rent a whole unit separately.
That's something.
I know, well, sometimes they'll do like an A or B, but, um, again, that's with the tax assessor or whatever, the utility company.
I wouldn't, you know.
Be able to accept.
Excuse me, the first question was, do you have separate utilities? And I think you said you had separate utilities, yes, and then you said you didn't have separate utilities.
I don't, no, 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 I don't. I, I'm sorry, I missed.
So just one set of utilities, one set of utilities, right?
But Sharon, I, I think the testimony was that if this is approved, you will have separate utilities for the one-bedroom apartment. Is that what I understood?
Well, yeah, I guess I could do that.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I don't know what you said.
No, I don't think so.
I didn't, we weren't looking at it that way.
It's one house.
My question.
We haven't thought that for ahead.
Yeah.
You know, as to utilities.
That is something that you consider at that point, you know, your, has to be something that I haven't thought about.
Well, yeah, in terms of like A D Us, if there aren't separate utilities, then it makes a more compelling argument that is like one household, possibly.
That's true. Um, like, I haven't a hundred percent, um, familiarized myself with all the A D Us. I know each town. Um, for example, like Princeton has their own A D U, um, ordinance, um, right, I think, I want to say Westfield. Um, also came up with their own and everyone is kind of different. Um, so there may be in the state, they may say the utilities have to be one or has to be two, but again, it, it all depends on what, um. It may be home rule or maybe the, the state mandatory language about the utility connection, which makes it a A D U. Or it could be the size. It all depends. It could be that it has to be detached or attached, you know, or it could be both or it has to be above. Um, but I know that for this, um, application, they do have, um, there is not access into the existing building. Um, they plan to close that office, is that correct?
Right.
So you can't access the, um, main house from the, the property.
Separate, but like I said, we haven't changed any of the, you know, divided up utilities. I don't have a separate meter. I don't have separate, uh, gas. Everything that I have is all coming out of one, you know, pretty much one, you know, central location right now, because I've been there. I don't need to change it. I mean, if this were a, a, a separate building, I guess you would have to do all that if you were changing that. I understand. But since it's part of a one structure, um, unless, unless we require it, I really didn't think about that.
Is there, we have a separate bathroom in the dental office?
Oh, yeah. I can do everything in there except maybe take a shower right there. I mean, we could cook in it, but we don't have a kitchen. What I do basically is everything that you would do in a home, in my own little office space.
The dental office has gas.
Gas, I have, yeah.
Part of it.
I have a gas connection. I have electrical, uh, you know, I use it all, so.
What is the nearest two-family to the property? What's the nearest two-family property from, from this property?
No, that's a good question. I, I, I don't know. I mean, if you're going down River Road. There may be one or two properties that are used as two-family down there on the same street. When you get down as far as prospect, I think the zone changes to R B. And I don't, there's a different requirement in an R B zone or allowance. You know, R A, I think is still pretty much to that location. They may, I'm sure who owns, has two families.
There is a, do I need to push this on? There is a, um, house.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Speak into the microphone.
Across the street, um, I've been in a doctor's office.
That's true.
Um, which now it appears to be, um, a rental on one side. The doctor's office is a rental. The house is very hard to tell what's going on. But the mailing for us, you know, to comply with your requirements was sent to an L L C in another town. So that appears to be maybe two peak, two different things going on in that house. And down, and another corner down is a dental office with a, an apartment upstairs, so.
That's a good.
Different zone.
It's R B.
I, I assume you had to notice for this application. Have you heard back from any of your neighbors with?
No.
Issues with?
Please, go ahead. Good luck to you.
Okay.
And so what did happen? I, I did go to the neighbors and they, and they said, this is great. No one said, uh, this is a bad idea, so. I wasn't looking to solicit. I was saying, did you get it?
Right.
Most of them, most of them were returning.
So, and doing like a quick, 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 um, Google search, uh, I think this is a proposed bill. Um, for A D, A D Us, um, that was done in like twenty twenty-four. It did say that they would require, um, separate utilities for A D Us, so just wanna.
That's Red Bank's proposed ordinance.
This is the state, yeah, so I just did a quick, um.
Say anything about forcing them to go on a list for A D Us at that point? I've only done a first review because, you know, I have that space in my house also. I think if we call it an A D U. I don't want to eventually push them into a situation where like, let's say they're not living in it yet. And because they are an A D U, they're a part of the low-income list that that.
Yeah, I know, so like, for example, Princeton, they deed restrict their A D Us. So if they, if you want an A D U, you have to deed restrict the, that use, so it can't be used for anything else. Because now we did a deed restriction.
It doesn't require them to go on.
No, 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 no.
They can opt out of all of that.
Yeah, they can opt out of it unless something else is there for, for them to be low-income. No, that, that is not a thing. But again, um, some towns do have that, that they deed restrict for low-income or they deed restrict for it to be just an accessory dwelling or both.
So the matter for them later, if we have an ordinance?
Yeah. Because this would, um, be, it would be grandfathered in, so this would be, be before the, the, the new law comes in place, so it would be okay. Um, it's just that if there's any change, then they have to comply with the new mandatory.
Do they say anything, if they refer to separate utilities in terms of heat or air conditioning, would they have to have separate heating systems and separate air conditioning systems?
I think it's only condos. One of the leaders said, we think it's one of those condos. They wouldn't be a large tenant if the leaders were together. They don't, they have a separate, they have a separate address. I think they need permission, at least for us, for that accessory dwelling and the post office and then.
But again, that's all, it, it all could depend on how Red Bank might decide to bring that. That may be in some towns, but it may not be the requirement here. But like I said, in this, it just says for any utility connect, um, connection. But like I said, in this, it just says for any utility connect, um, connection, new or separate, um, directly to the utilities, between the ADU and the utility is required, um, related to the connection, fee and capacity charge, so, um, unless it's being built together, like it's a new single family home being constructed with an ADU. But for existing, I think you have to have separate. But that's state law and it's not, it hasn't been approved yet. This is still being wondered in the air and I think they'll be made several more changes before this even comes on the Senate floor.
Yeah, I have a question, just, I, I don't really have a good feel of what the building looks like and what the house looks like. But if I was in the dental office right now, would I be able to access the primary residence, like walking down?
Yeah, yes.
So I don't see, what is the? What, why do we have to do anything? Why, why couldn't he, if he wanted to make bedrooms down at the end of the, and keep it doorway as like a true mother daughter? Like you had said, instead of a separate apartment and going from non, my, my issue really is going from nonconforming to nonconforming. So what's preventing them from creating a mother daughter right now? You've got a connected, you can probably put, looks like two bedrooms down there, you can put a bath in, you can put a little kitchenette in. You have access to your son's family if he moves in or his kids. What's preventing them from doing that?
Nothing, it would just be an extension of.
That would be an extension.
Yeah, of the existing houses.
As compared to you change your mind and then we sell it and then someone comes in and wants to rent it and next thing you know, we've got a little bit of more activity. That's just, I'm trying to think now.
I mean, applicant can speak for themselves that they may want that, you know, or the son may not want a hundred percent access to their parents. Just walking in through.
Well, I mean, it would be a lot to work, true mother daughter.
Like, like you would say, it would be a lot to work.
It's not a big deal. So, you know, we, we were trying to find out what would conform most with.
You just have to speak into the mic.
Your wishes as we went through this.
Yeah.
But it's once they mentioned a separate apartment, that's what triggers it for me.
It sounds like to me that they could make a true mother daughter if they wanted to without any involvement from zoning board.
But the issue that we may have is that should they sell it, someone can just block that door and we wouldn't know about it. Because, um, single family homes aren't inspected like how regular, well, single family homes are. So you can have someone at any time that decides to put up a wall and therefore no one would know.
Well, they'd be operating an illegal house then, right? So then, you know, in that situation, their neighbors would all cope. We've got, we have to change zoning because we're worried about in the future of someone after the, the dude who sold the house gonna come in and put a faux wall up. I think that's looking at it a little bit more than we have to personally.
If I was gonna sell the house, you know, I wouldn't go through all this stuff right now. I would look to sell it as a home office, right? Professional, that's what I would be doing.
But the home office isn't permitted.
And that's still considered that what it is and shouldn't create any problem through somebody coming in. When I bought that property, real estate agent told me, only because at the time, I think it was, and I don't know why they did that, but apparently the owner of the property at the time had some issues with the town. And they weren't gonna let him just sell it outright as a home office. They were gonna make that person go to the zoning board to have it. Which didn't make sense, but I didn't know that. I wasn't even aware of it. And I think the real estate agent that we had at the time also didn't think of it, but when they said that you may have to have somebody approve this, do you still wanna buy the house? You know, so it's questioned at that time was for us was maybe not, you know? But I went to the zoning anyway and.
Yeah. So in this situation.
Here, I got it on the zoning board.
And you're on the board too.
You know, the attorney for the board at the time, they said, no, you gotta go to the board.
Hey, so my question is if the potato sell it right now, as is, it would, it could, the nonconforming use transfers over to the new owner and they can still operate in attorney's office or dental office?
Yeah, it was approved as, as they said they had, yeah. They got board approval, so it's, it's now a legal use because they, the use was now waived, even though it's not permitted in the zone, um, but they received a use variance for it. Um, which then makes it now permitted, even though it's nonconforming, but yeah.
Yeah, as, you know, and to be honest with you, I think if, if we did sell it to my son, which would make it a lot easier, frankly. Although I don't know if I wanted to live there, I mean. You know, it would be a lot easier that way than me trying to sell it to somebody and live in the apartment. I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't want to live there.
Right.
In the apartment and have somebody own that property.
Right.
I have a question to Paul's point, um, considering the scale of the house and I built plenty of houses with two and three kitchens, does the borough allow a second kitchen in a house this size? Cause I noticed there's, you know, in the new proposed plans, there's, um, you know, I see a gas range, which I'm assuming is a gas range, and a shower where there isn't one now. Could they do the additions?
That's a construction code, that's a construction code question. Because it, I can't write, single family homes are rarely regulated. So putting in a second kitchen, that's why the whole, you always think that somebody else is going to change it into an illegal apartment. So it's kind of always best if we have somebody that wants to turn it into it, then we have like the, the two. Um, but that's a code question of whether or not you're allowed to have the two kitchens, um, in a single family home. Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying they do it.
So I, I know it's funny.
They have approved or not, they do it. They're not looking to do that.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I think this is a really good reuse of an existing building. Uh, I would be very positive towards it. Um, I kind of, I hear what Paul is saying, but I sort of feel like that's gonna leave you in a, a limbo situation that wouldn't really be comfortable should you want to sell that property or, you know, things. I think getting it approved as essentially a two family or a house with a one bedroom apartment attached would be cleaner, uh, for you and would be better, I think ultimately for the town, uh, to have it clearly delineated. Um, you know, since we are headed towards ADUs, we're not there yet, so it's not gonna be approved as an ADU. But, you know, it's in the spirit of an ADU, I think, you know, and, and I would be enthusiastic about approving it. I just wanna say that. I understand.
I'm still on the questions. Any, anybody from the board have any questions, further questions for?
No questions at all.
Okay, anybody from the public have any questions for this applicant? Gotta ask question. On any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I don't see any. Uh, if somebody like to make a motion to either approve or deny this.
Sharon, I just asked. I was showing that one question, just one question, just in terms of assuming for the moment, and I have no idea how the vote's gonna go, but if this application is approved, cause I know there was some testimony about mother daughter and two family, I mean, just what is from you being?
I would say what, I would, my question is what would the board want to?
Okay.
Classified ads, the use ads.
Because, um, first of all, does Red Bank allow a mother daughter? I mean, it probably is either a one family or a two family. Okay, and then just typically a mother daughter is something where there has to be internal connection between the two and you can't have a separate entrance. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, cause it sounds like.
That's where they're heading to, but.
Or no, I mean, it sounds like that they're not heading. I mean, that's what I'm like, they're heading, I mean, would this be a two family home? Would it be? I mean, is that?
What does the board feel like?
Well, okay, I mean, I just wanna make sure that.
That would be the determination of the board.
Okay.
They haven't decided what, which way they're gonna go, they're just feeling us out. And we don't have a hard and fast rule for what we want them to do even. Um, we're waiting for a law, or, or ordinance to come through.
Right, but the board can't do, the zoning board is not doing formal meetings. So it's either you have to make a decision on what the use is going to be. Either you want this to be a one family, uh, you could categorize it as a ADU or it's, it's the determination of the board.
I mean, just what would the options be? Obviously, a two family.
A two family, oh. One, the single family home, I don't even know how you do that, single family home. That's the two family.
Well, those are typically the nonconforming two, two family.
Yeah, they're, they're nonconforming.
Nonconforming two family. You know, to me, it, it sounds like, personally speaking, you can accomplish what you told us you wanted to accomplish by not even coming to us.
By doing a renovation.
I think it's premature, cause there is this ADU coming down, we're trying to figure out how do we squeeze it in before it comes down? Do we wanna squeeze it in before it comes down? We're gonna get a set of guidelines from the state. So we want, um, this project to be compliant with the state law that's coming that we've been waiting for. So I think it's premature. I don't, it doesn't sound like there's a sense of urgency to what you're doing, maybe I'm wrong. It sounds like they can accomplish the things without any hardship of what their actual goal is. That, that's just my feeling on it. I totally appreciate and have one day dream of doing exactly what you're doing with my children. Whether they'll have me, I don't know. But, uh, I think it's premature, quite, quite frankly.
Yeah, I, I've been, been on this board now for, I don't know, eighteen plus years and I've never turned a single family into a two family, so I, I don't know what, what we need to do with that.
I would say no, I, I would more or less agree with Paul though. Like, it's still a single, it's a single family, they're adding. I don't know, cause like, I'll go to Long Island, one of my friends has that, and it's a single family home, but they just have a mother daughter connecting. I don't know. Put it as a two family, I don't.
I don't think they wanna.
See, yeah, see, that's, that's the problem is they wanna close off the connection. And that then creates a two family, so.
A deadbolt.
I think it's a much cleaner option, and that's the way things are headed. It's, and I think their propose, what they're proposing is exactly what ADUs are meant to be. Right, for people like them to stay in town and not sell their house and who knows what happens to it if they sell.
Well, Asbury's ADU law is different from Montclair's ADU law and from Princeton, they're very different. And but again, it's not, they're not projecting that they wanna do any of those things, uh, as I see it. I, I think it's premature as well. I just think.
Well, I, I don't think we can say, you know, because we don't have the law yet and we don't know how this will fit with the law that, you know. I think we can approve this variance to make it a two family house. Uh, whether it then looks like an ADU down the road or not, uh, you know, it, I don't know that that matters. I also think we're, we're defining mother daughter as having a connecting door. I'm not even sure that is a real definition. Uh, that, you, you know, I, I think we're getting in the weeds on that and there's a very simple proposal in front of us. I mean, I, I'd like to approve it. Uh, if, I don't know if we're ready to make that motion yet, um, take a vote, but I would certainly not tangle this up in laws that haven't been drafted yet. And, uh, where, whereas what, you know, what they're proposing, I think fits nicely in the neighborhood. It's a less intensive use than there now and provides a, another home, uh, which is a positive in my view.
So, so, so here's the guess then is that we approve a two family.
Yes.
Conversion to a two family.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything and just said, said it way better than I would have. Uh, my concern with saying it's premature is who knows how long it'll be till it's mature, right? Uh, it could be like an hour from now or thirty years from now, and like you said, and we have something in front of us now. Does it make sense? So, nothing more to elaborate, but I agree with everything you said.
Can I ask why, uh, just for us, why we're doing the, I mean, the use, I think like with Anne, I would, I would approve. I mean, I think it's good what they're doing, but we're the ones deciding what it's.
Yeah.
It is, uh.
Cause you, I mean, it's not for interpret, they're not asking for an interpretation of the, their.
I don't know if I can say.
I like, you know, what it is, I just, how to end it.
As I said before, you know, you gotta judge each application on its own merits and gonna make it very standard and follow through on what you think this is gonna become, then you know, you're sticking by that rule of the reg, that's it. You're not gonna think about anything else. You're not gonna think about, well, these people wanna stay in that house some way, somehow. I can still do that without all the changes. I can stay in the house without changing the office. I could retire there and that space won't get used if I don't, if I opt not to use it. What I was thinking of doing was something that we thought would make it functionally similar than what we have now, except that we could actually live there. So, do I wanna necessarily live in my office? I don't know. I'm just saying, all right? I worked there all the time and I have worked there for over fifty years. So I don't know if I wanna lay in that bed in that office after I've treated umpteen people in the same place. You know, it may not feel so great. That's just, you know, me only, but same time, I think. I don't know, I think you have to look at it from not just a strict rule array that you follow by your ordinances. I think sometimes you have, that's what the zoning board is all about, give relief where it's possible. So if somebody else may come in with the same application, or maybe not, they may do it without you even coming to here, that had done right. Um, well, I don't know, I just think that we're trying to follow what the town says and they're asking for that relief, maybe that thought.
Sharon, I have a question. If we define it as a two family, there's nothing stopping it from being a rental in the future.
No.
You know, so even though the intent is this now.
Right.
Is that a two family home, would it be sold as a two family home? Listen, and forever on as it's, you know, there, it'll be a two.
The resolution says.
Well, would, would you need, again, to have two addresses?
It would then be a two family home with two separate addresses and utilities and everything.
Again, yeah.
Oh, mailboxes and everything. It's, it's not, it's no longer just the convenient mother daughter, which I do define as a door in between to a larger structure and a smaller structure. But a two family home would be then in an RA district, a two family home. There's no changing it from now, it could be sold a hundred times.
I, I guess I have a question about that. Um, if we approve this as a two family, but they share utilities, is, doesn't that conflict?
You can't charge them, you can't say, well, maybe five hundred dollars, it's not fair. So your utilities would be in your rent at that point, they would have to be, you can't charge this. Yeah, so it's all utilities will be included, is they can meter separately, but they can meter separately now that they have two families, two addresses. They can meter every utility separately, because there's, the intent that they two family.
Just to be clear, your proposal does not have separate utilities?
No, it doesn't have. There always was only one roof, with one unit, one heating system, one electrical system, you know, air conditioning separately, but because they were really were located. But still, all the sources were, you know, from one location. To change all that, I might as well just knock the house down and start all over. I can't see how you could rewire, replumb all of that and, and expect it to be affordable.
What you mean, I, I think they wouldn't, but any mature renter, you know, wouldn't be able to have separate utilities. And I'm not for your instance, the future owners of the house.
That, that, I can't answer that question, cause I don't think, you know, I'll be here. I probably wouldn't even be here anywhere, but that's it. The other thing I'm interested in thinking about, and you know, I don't know whether you would ever entertain it, but if you deed restricted to a mother daughter, meaning that it's the same family that owns the property that rents to a son or a sibling or, you know, something like that. Unless that person live in that apartment, even though it's still connected there, because we didn't knock the door out or we didn't close it off. Even though it's still connected there because we didn't knock the door out or we didn't close it off. I think that's a way to handle something like this in a different way without really changing your, you know, ordinance to ad- address it. Just something to think about. I don't.
Can I? Sure, so I. A a a couple of things, just to to start from the beginning again. So in some towns that do allow mother, daughters, so a lot of towns. Whatever reason, it's not that they don't like two family homes, but they recognize the sometimes some zoning. Issues with the two family homes in zones that do not permit it. So a lot of times, if you do have a traditional mother, daughter structure. The um, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of great reasons for it, you know, you want the parents to be able to help the kids, you want the kids to be able to help the parents. You want everyone to have a little bit of a sense of privacy. Uh but some towns do not like calling it two family homes. And so in that situation, and I'm not saying that's good or bad or should be or should not be. But in that situation, the key distinction is usually they have an ordinance, the town that'll say, one, you can't have a separate entrance. Cause they don't want it to look like a separate second home. And two, you have to have an internal connection. Because they want it to be that um they know, the parents know or the child knows that just in the middle of night. He or she could wake up and just walk into the kitchen and and make coffee or get something to eat. And the theory is you would not let a stranger, a third party in there unless they were a family member. Because you don't want someone coming into the middle of your bedroom or your your thing. So that has always been the big source of the issue. Is there gonna be an internal connection or not? And um and then.
Does Red Bank have a definition of a mother, daughter?
Not have a definition. However, thank God for Google. Um it does define mother, daughter as um as Kevin stated. They have a shared entrance that splits off into two living rooms, two bathrooms, two, two, so the same of everything.
But if Red Bank doesn't have a definition.
It's not permitted.
I was gonna say, we can't approve something that's not defined.
Correct. Other than if you put the condition in there that there has to be an internal connection or there's not. I think that's the the issue. Now, the other thing is, if, you know, if there is no, if there is separate, you know, uh it's distinct. You can't go from one to the other. It's a two family home and there's nothing necessarily wrong with that, i- if that's what you all want. And I think the important thing is to know that if that's what you want, then you just have to know that it's not gonna be. At some point, you're not gonna own the property. At some point, your son might not, you might move to Florida and that's okay, but.
But then to answer another question, if we have a two family home, are we allowed to stipulate that there has to be a connection between the two?
No, I don't think you can.
You cannot have a connection between.
So then we can't talk about having a mother, daughter with any connection.
Well, r- r- right. I mean, it would be without, I mean, it would be.
We don't have a mother, daughter.
No, but if 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 you as a condition of the, just say as a condition of approval, you said that there has to be an internal connection. I mean, how can we do that if we want to approve a two family? Well, if you want, if you wanna approve it to family, then you don't do that. But if if you.
But then we can't approve a mother, daughter because it's not.
Well, it's it's it's, it would be a single family home that has, uh, you know, the mother, daughter unit, but it's not a mother, daughter.
So if you wanted to go that route, we would just follow Paul's suggestion and make this a renovation.
Yes.
If if that's what you want to do.
Then we don't have jurisdiction.
Right, but isn't that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying if.
Two kitchens, two bathrooms, like Sean said, that, you know, that's typically not allowed.
They would have to remove the entrance, the new entrance that's created. They'd have to remove that door. Um they'd have to re, kind of reconfigure their um their their plans. Their elevation um in order for it to to work. Honestly, I wouldn't feel, I know from a code. Um from code enforcement and maybe even from the construction and fire marshal, they would not feel comfortable with something like that. Because we do have a problem in Red Bank. Um it's a consistent problem now. Where we're seeing that people are creating these units illegally, not even units, but just these bedrooms. Like, for example, yesterday, the um code inspector showed me um a bedroom in a closet. And it was um and it was a closet that had a. It on a second, it had it had a slope, so it was barely, actually, it was a short term rental too. Um it was a legal short term rental and they were renting a room where the roof, when it's slow, was in the closet. You could see clearly the closet on shelving. Yeah, the shelving still like in that the iron um for the shelving still there and the bed is in there. So um that is definitely an issue we do see. And with two families, you are um. Unless you sell it as like two separate um like uh for sale homes. Um instead of rentals, then you wouldn't have to register. But if it's some, like you're renting for a tenant, you do have to do the tenant registration. So, does he ask?
Yes, well, what would you suggest?
I cannot suggest, I, the board, as a zoning officer, I learned that recently, I can't.
You can't, you can't.
Mr. Chairman, what I would say is the notice, and we've all been using the terms interchangeably and it's probably not appropriate. But the the notice says they wanna use, the applicant is seeking renovation of dental office into two family slash mother, daughter apartment. And then they all other variances. So I think you're probably gonna have to specify what exactly it is you want. Whether it's a two family house or whether you just wanna have uh your house where you have a room for your child to stay. Uh which.
Yeah.
Probably is, we don't have jurisdiction, I mean, we don't have the grant relief for that. It's um if it's not, but.
We don't have an ordinance on it, mother, daughter, though.
Well, it would be, it would just be, right, I wouldn't call it a mother, daughter. It would just be, they're just gonna make it a two family home.
No question.
Or they're just gonna renovate their home so that their child can live with them. Um but I mean, that's, I think. We don't have, in just a couple of years ago, in Middletown, I think once at a private application, not that it's relevant at all, but. Middletown does not have a mother, daughter. They say it's a one family or two family, but they do make it, you know, sign something. But again, those deed restrictions are much more uh judicially criticized and and it's, they don't wanna distinguish between family members and friends. And it's unenforceable and hard to enforce. So I think, Mr. Chairman, we just, if if they're applying for a two family home and you all feel comfortable. You approve it or you don't approve it. Um but that that's, I think that's the.
Leave it up to them then.
Well, I think they have to tell us what they're applying for, and I said respectfully.
I do, before you say that.
Yeah, I speak into the mic.
Quick question. It would seem um not logical to me to allow a family to say sleep where we're talking about and not have an exit. To have to go back through, in case of a fire, you would have to go back through the house and find another way out. I mean, that that doesn't sound logical that there can't be an outside exit from that space.
Well, there can be if you make it a two family home. So that's what we're saying. It it needs to, it's up to you if you wanna apply for this as a two family home.
Are you sure that what you're reading says there cannot be an outside exit?
Well, I think it's the the main entrance because it's it's the main entrance. You're creating two main entrance, which look, which now looks like two apartment. Two, two houses, like the two families.
What if it was a side entrance to?
If it was a side entrance, it'll be fine. So I think if they maybe move the door to the side, they do have a back door.
You could have a side entrance.
Right now, we have two rear, actually have three rear entrances. They have two office entrances from the back. Uh and one going to the, excuse me, into the house.
Yeah, I mean, we're moving any place you want it.
In addition, we added back door to the house because when we first moved there, the back door to the house was going through the waiting room. The office, uh from the office into the house, through the doorway that's still presently there. That's how we got in and out of the house from the back.
But we can move the doorway, that's not a problem.
And Shaun, would we still, out of curiosity, retain jurisdiction? Um because it's a nonconforming use, would it technically be an extension?
No, but they're now abandoning the nonconforming use of the.
Right, okay.
And now it's being, this is a family home.
I would not close it. If you can't approve it based on design there, the back door that goes into this property. Cause that was what was added on to make it, first of all, uh square footage wise, big enough to be considered a apartment or area. The door was basically for our use to go in and out of, so we weren't going through the house to get out. As if, as if my son was living there. I wouldn't be wanting to walk through his, into his house and out the back door every time I wanted to go out.
I don't think they have to use the the Google definition of a mother, daughter. I agree with them about this, that they're separate entrance.
Yeah.
We don't have a definition of mother, daughter. We don't use one. So we could create one where I agree with them that if they, it's the same house, it's the same utilities. So you can have a separate entrance. Like this, because it doesn't exist right now. We're gonna approve an accessory dwelling unit and how to define it? If we were gonna approve a mother, daughter and have to define it, why couldn't we define their separate entrance as loud?
I guess what you're defining would be stipulated in the resolution because that's pretty much restricting what they're allowed to do with the property. So they can withdraw their application if they decide that they want to leave the entrance and they just wanna do, that's them withdrawing their application. So it's not voting, we wouldn't vote. They can withdraw their application.
And renovate.
And renovate.
The one we're changing. I'm not gonna go through this again.
You gotta speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. If you don't wanna approve it based on what we submitted and I and I can't understand why, um that's just my. And there's no way I'm gonna come back here with another plan that you're gonna knock out to say it's probably not what we want. Cause we're not allowing two families in a, in an R A zone or whatever it is, two family. That not what, that's never been what we thought it would be. Even when I first thought about it, this wasn't considered, even though, yes, we're separate from my son. In that sense, but they all grew up there. He grew up there, they all grew up in that house. Um. Did we ever live there together? Probably when he first, before he bought the house, he's not in now, but one of the house, he was in. He lived with us and had his first child there. So I guess that was like the same thing, you know, we had the two family then in the same house. Not permanently, obviously. Um the door that's presently used to go in and out of the office is still there. The only thing I do so that, right, sake of having it uh secure, I have a lock that locks the door, but you can't go in and out. But the door is still there. Would I close the door off? Not if it created a problem like this where we're saying, oh, now you're gonna make it into a two separate, another apartment. I wouldn't do that. I'd leave the door.
But the plan as it is, what you proposed has a, the the door closed off. So I guess the board is just making decision right now. I guess to simplify it, are you guys approving? This apartment?
As a two family.
As a two family.
I.
And they are a.
I wanna make one more plea for something. I, if we don't, if we approve it as a two family, there's a legal structure there. You know, yes, it could be sold, it could be a rental. All that is true. If we leave it in this gray area, it seems like we're opening the door to an illegal use. I think Shauna said this earlier. I really don't like that idea at all. I think that's pretty dreadful to sort of. Nudge someone towards what could down the road, not by the applicants. Um but by someone else as, you know, uh an illegal, unregistered apartment. I I just cannot see that as a positive. I think two family houses are great. You know, I really think they're a wonderful, when I was born, my family lived in a two family in Verona, New Jersey. Um there's, it's a great way to live. It's a, it's something in between a private house and an apartment. And, you know, I think it's positive. I think it fits on River Road. I I would love to see us approve this as a two family. And give it a legal structure. And uh that's it. I I I think I'm done now.
And then Anne, uh Meg.
Yes.
What we have done in other situations, if the board was inclined to approve the two family, is you typically have a condition that does no further expansion or intensification. Absent further approval of the board. So that's, that's always implied. I mean, it's a condition and everything. Um but yeah, I mean, but like I said, I just, I just think we have to, whatever we're, whatever's being applied for, whatever being approved. Whatever the resolution's gonna say, I just want the board members to make a fully informed decision so that we're all in the same, saying this is a single family home or it's a two family home. But I think that's.
I think to keep it as clear cut.
And to that, I think if we were not clear, that would be also cause great confusion for everybody in the future.
So clarity on this is if you, if you do, the way Shaun was saying, if it's built just like that, you don't change it. It's two, it's two, it can be a two family. If he, you know, because this is what they want. They want it this way so that would class them under a two family. But if you don't do that, you, if you want it the other way, you have to change the plans. That's what you're saying.
Have to resubmit to me. He withdraw his application. He'd submit revised plans from showing the door connection between the two.
Okay, so these plans show that the choice is a two.
Yes.
Okay.
And then. Yeah, if if we call this a two family, that means if it's, it can be sold as a two family.
One hundred percent, yeah.
And the, and the anticipation of the per, people purchasing would assume that they had separate utilities, separate electric, some two families could occupy that.
They don't have to have separate utilities. It would be a rental. They could be sold and would be a, and some kind of rental apartment. It doesn't have to have separate utilities.
So it could be, all, it could only have one owner. A two family couldn't be sold.
It wouldn't be sold as like two.
As two units.
Condom, condominium.
Pat, you would charge him more in rent to cover.
Selling a house with a rental unit.
Like it could be included in the rent.
Yeah.
Yeah, people do that all the time.
All the time.
I know it happens all the time.
No, it's legal.
We're just trying to make it legal here.
It's legal to do it that way.
Yeah.
There's nothing illegal of including utilities in the rent.
Okay, all right.
Uh you know, it's not even an issue.
If we do approve a two family, I just wanna be clear that the notice was explicit that this was an approval for a two family. I wouldn't want a neighbor to suddenly be upset that a two family was then approved in their neighborhood.
The notice says, the applicant is seeking renovation of dental office into two family slash mother, daughter apartment.
Okay, those are contradictions, two family or mother, daughter, by by our definition. That that I'm, that's what I'm struggling with. What am I approving?
A definition of mother, daughter.
Right.
There is no legal definition of mother, daughter in Red Bank.
But mother, daughter is in the notice. So if we don't have a definition, then the notice is ambiguous.
The resolution would clarify what it is, the two families.
Here's the thing, from a, from a notice standpoint, I would be concerned if it didn't say two family. Um whether that, that's not, I mean, because that is what would capture most people's attention, uh if if they had a concern. Um and um yes, it is, there is some nuances, there are some distinctions, which is why, I mean, the initial point was. I think whatever the application is, whatever it is you're gonna approve or deny, and whatever the resolution, we all have to be specific. Because to do so would just create lots of headaches for everybody later on. So you either, you know, you approve or deny a two family home. Um that that's what the, unless they're gonna change. Now, to the applicants, I would say one last thing, just real briefly. So you need a use variance if you're applying for a two family home and a use variance has some strict legal burns. And there's some special rules that apply to a use variance and you probably remember this from your, from your time on the board. But technically, only uh seven members of the board vote on a use variance application. And the law says that you need affirmative five yes votes to pass. So unlike most other things where majority wins, in this situation, it's a super majority of five, you need five of seven votes. I just want, that has nothing to do with you or this application, it's just New Jersey law.
I've got a a question. If we approve the usage of a two family, then the usage of a dentist's office or a professional.
Abandoned now.
Would be abandoned.
Yes.
Does that happen when they start doing the work?
As soon as this resolution is memorialized, right, Kevin?
Well, typically, we we would ask the question, are you gonna, as a condition, are you officially abandoning that? And typically, we'd say, just in case, sometimes we say the work's not gonna be done for a year. And so we could fashion it however you want it. Uh but typically, we would say, you know, as soon as you pull the permits.
Yeah, as soon as you pull the permits, yeah, it's abandoned to use.
I hear you, Shauna. Your answer to that question, when does?
Oh, I said that the use would be abandoned. So once, at the point of when you pull permits, it's now abandoned.
So once the work begins.
But not so, if I get you, if you were to approve this, then I can't work anymore, my.
No, 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 you can still work.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
Yes, no, you could still work in your office.
I do.
Up until you decide.
Until you're.
Right, until you decide to pull permits, which now makes you.
Yeah, no, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, abandoned to use that is, is now there because now you, you're no longer using it for the purpose that was originally approved.
I remember probably cloud, that, that we used to approve things and if they didn't enact, enact the approval within a certain timeframe.
Agreed.
Yeah.
You know, whatever it was, uh, forty-five days or it kept, that number kept coming up, but I don't think that's enough time. But you could dismiss it without prejudice, in other words, they'd have to come back, start all over with this whole thing.
Your, our resolution usually says two years or?
Typically, yes.
Yeah, typically two years, so if you do not pull the permits within two years.
Or you agreed upon extension.
Or, yes, and the extension, then, um, you're, then it reverts back to
Yeah.
the, um, single-family home
Right.
with a, um, office, professional office.
Still that.
So, if we sell the house to my son in six months, your approval is.
It's still there.
To the house, not to us.
It's attached to the property, yes, okay.
Yeah, okay. That's all we want, you know, those questions that you have trouble with, we have trouble with.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess we've decided that we're looking at it ma- making a motion to either approve it, deny this application as a two-family home. If anybody like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, right.
And I think that that use is a lot less, um,
Intense?
intense than the current use, so I will second Ann's.
And just, real briefly, just, if the application is to be approved, the conditions of approval would typically include, and we might need to clarify them here, would be compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations that the team made tonight, it would be compliance with Shawna's review memorandum, uh, compliance with all affordable housing, applicable affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, um, uh, to the extent necessary, outside approvals, a twenty-four month timeframe, uh, permits, uh, that, you know, necessary building, construction permits. When all the work was completed, we would need a certification confirming that the work was completed in accordance with the approved plans, in accordance with your testimony, in accordance with the resolution. Obviously, we would need a certificate of occupancy before the occupancy and no further expansion or intensification of the, uh, two-family home, absent further approval of the board. Um, and then we had, uh, let's see, um, we would have that if the application is approved, we just talked about in conjunction with, uh, pulling of building permits, you would be perpetually and knowingly and officially abandoning that pre- that, the prior approval that you got in terms of having the, uh, house there with the office. Um, just one thing for the board members, are we making sure that there's at least two dedicated parking spaces for the, the, the other unit?
Yeah, so it'd, it'd actually be four.
Four total, for two, two for the, two units, two each, okay. And, um, okay, um, and then we talked about, um, I don't think, it sounds like we're not making anything about separate utilities, you said, whether they do that or don't do that, got it. Um, we always make sure that the tax assessor will obtain a copy of, of the resolution and, um, we're not talking about any, um, deed restrictions. Um, and we talked about changing inside entrance, I mean, that's all off the table. And, uh, no deed restriction, we're crossing a lot of fences here. Um, and obviously, construction with the, I mean, compliance with the construction code and building code. So, um, if the application is approved, are you okay with those standard conditions? Just speaking to the mic, please.
I guess I am, yes.
I'm sorry, speaking to the mic is rattle the mall, but I.
Yes.
Pretty much it, yeah.
Okay, well, do you need time to think about it?
Uh.
Standard.
It's, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um, anyway, so now the hard part goes to the board in terms of, uh, there was a motion. Uh, are those conditions acceptable to the motioner and the seconder?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
On it, I think when you come up with a final resolution, if there's any concerns Mr. Paduto has at that time, we can.
We would send you a draft copy of the resolution.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Ann Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Yoro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Paul Kepner?
Uh, no.
Okay, that is one, two, three, five, six, six, yes, in favor of the application.
Okay.
Thank you for your.
Good luck.
And your, thank you.
Sorry, sorry for all the confusion, but it, that's something we run into on a regular basis, so it, it's had a couple.
Still the same old same.
Okay, anybody need a break, have a good day, move on.
Bye for now.
Okay, next we have Fifty Hilltop Terrace.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can assure you this applicant is not seeking a two-family home or a mother-daughter. So, so what we're gonna do is, um, just for, uh, record-keeping purposes, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice? Seeing none, uh, Shawna and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So, it'd be my opinion, it'd be of jurisdiction to proceed. Uh, Shawna Ebanks, you are a professional planner, you are the borough's director of community development. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you, and we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A1 is the development per- permit application and denial letter dated December 2nd, 2024. A2 is the intent to proceed, January 9th, 2025. A3 is the survey prepared by Frank DeSantis dated April 27th, 2016. A4 are the, uh, plans prepared by Jacqueline Flore of Ingenuity Infrastructure and that's dated January 17th, 2025, three sheets. And A5 is the review memorandum from Shawna Ebanks dated April 2nd, 2025. So, uh, good evening, welcome, thank you for waiting, if you could just state your name and then we'll swear you in.
Oh, see you, man.
Okay, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay, and just real quickly, um, we're talking about the property at Fifty Hilltop Terrace, are you the owner of that property?
I am.
And how long have you owned it roughly?
Five years, six years.
And my notes suggest that there's a single-family home at the site?
Correct.
And do you live there?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a garage now?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you tell the board, uh, exactly what it is you're looking to do and what variance relief you need?
Sure, uh, so looking to extend an existing bedroom above the existing building, but that's not really probably here for the variance. Uh, adding a single-car garage on the side of the house. The property is laid out such that it's not possible to have it side-facing, it would need to be front-facing in order for it to house a car. Uh, just generally speaking, because I see, wouldn't be able to get a car into that garage inside without driving over my neighbor's property. Uh, of the properties on Hilltop Terrace, um, there are seven out of ten properties that all have front-facing garages on that. We face the water reservoir, so there are no properties that can see the front of the garage. Um, in addition, anyone walking or driving by, the garage would be obstructed by the trees and earth plants in the way. Uh, so it wouldn't present any sort of, uh, eyesore to anyone. Um, in, in terms of moving garage, there's else on the property, if you're familiar at all, Hilltop Terrace, it is a steep slope hill, so there isn't really any place else to put it other than on the side of the house, uh, so that's kind of why it's there. Uh, I have the images of the other front-facing garages if you'd like to see them, but it's pretty straightforward. Uh, I'd like to add the garage, it would help in terms of keeping the car inside during the snow, snow removal. Again, it is a, a steep hill, so it kind of presents a problem when we're moving snow, trying to get in and out, so that would be a big help. And that's really it.
I have a question, um, tree removal, are you removing any or is that, that space clear already?
Everything is.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I know, there will be no tree removal spaces, open spaces.
Are there any, uh, setback issues, uh?
They conform.
Thank you.
Sure.
And just for the record, is it a?
One more question, sorry, same question, uh, have your neighbors come and talk to you about this? Does anybody say they hate it or?
Wasn't, they were all about your shop.
I, I think it's what we call hearsay.
But the notices were all delivered, uh, it's a, it's a very small, again, for those who are familiar, it's, it's a sort of old subset, but I kind of didn't know it there, so it's a pretty, it's very close.
And just for the record, is it an attached or detached?
Attached.
Attached. Any question from the board? Any questions from the public? What's the size of the garage?
Uh, typical cars, like, it's fifteen by twenty or thereabouts.
And there's no water or anything like that in that, or gas and no, like, just, uh, lights, electricity?
Yeah, electricity would be added, no water.
Yes. I make a motion to approve it?
A second?
And then, Mr. Chairman, some of the conditions would, typical would be compliance with promises, commitments and representations, compliance with any affordable housing obligations, contributions, compliance with Shawna's report, twenty-four-month shelf life. If you get the approval, you have to pull the building permits within twenty-four months and agreed upon, um, certification or with any agreed upon extension. Upon completion, you'll certify, or your builder will certify that it's been approved or installed in accordance with the approved plans and the testimony and the resolution, uh, so no living space in the garage, uh, correct?
Correct.
And we also have just a few more, we, um, uh.
Oh, just for the record, the garage is three hundred and ninety square feet.
Three hundred and ninety square feet. And then, uh, no tree removal and then, uh, the, no utilities in the garage except the, um, electricity. And just Shawna, just, uh, for the record, so there was the, the garage, there was the extension of the second-floor balcony, correct? And, um, and then the extension of a second-floor bedroom, all right, no specific variance relief is required with that, got it? So, uh, Paul, are those acceptable to you?
Yes.
And do you second one?
Sharon.
Shawna.
Okay, with you those conditions, okay. And are those conditions acceptable with you? Thank you.
Ann Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Yoro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Paul Kepner?
Yes.
Hello.
I just wanna say, it was like a long year after your sister was getting yelled at sitting down here.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion move.
All in favor? Thank you.
You know, I know more, but that is an intense, the first one, it is an intense, you know, discussion about, you know, two-family home, a mother-daughter, and, and like, you know what, it, they're saying, it, applicants probably don't realize it, but it is a very intense little discussion.